And Justice, fabulous. Thank you. Okay, and I think before we actually start the meeting and go to the meeting minutes, I just want to offer our condolences to a couple of families in town. Terry Murray, of course, who's worked for the Town Hall for the last 37 years and passed away at the beginning of the week. Sorely missed, smiling face in the Town Hall always. Makes you kind of sad to come in. But just for people to know, her calling hours for family and friends is 4:00 to 8:00 tomorrow at Miles Funeral and Tribute Center. And her service is 10:30 at Miles also on Friday. And also Everett Heller. Everett was dedicated a lot of time to the town of Sterling. Spent a lot of time on the Finance Board as well as other things. And our hearts go out to Elaine and the rest of the family. There are no plans yet for anything. We're thinking a memorial service down the road when his family can get here from California. So to both those families, our hearts break. And just send them some love, that's it. One day at a time, one foot in front of the other. With that being said, we will continue our meeting. Did you all get a chance to read the meeting minutes of June 21st?
Yes.
And I would entertain any changes?
None.
Okay, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Me and I.
Smith, I.
France and I. Oh, by the way, I'm here too.
You have to abstain.
Oh, yeah, you have to abstain. You weren't here.
That is correct.
You were frolicking somewhere. I just want to change the minutes. All right, and tonight we have Stephen in, our town planner, to give us an update on where he is. This is six months you're in the seat, Stephen, already?
Excuse me?
Six months you're already in that seat?
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half. Time flies when you're having a good time, doesn't it?
Son of a gun.
Yeah.
So I came to see you in January with what I proposed for my annual work program. I like to make a habit of stopping in midway through the year to apprise the board on my progress. So here goes. My first task was to update the town's floodplain bylaw so that it meets state standards in anticipation of the town receiving its new flood rate insurance maps, which are scheduled to be issued to the town in December. And these will replace the town's existing flood rate insurance maps from the early 80s. In order to use the new flood rate insurance maps, we have to revise our floodplain standards in our zoning bylaw. I put together a bylaw to do that. It's been reviewed and approved by the State Emergency Management Agency and reviewed by the town departments in charge of enforcing it. And I believe the town administrator just sent it off to Town Council for review. The only missing part in the bylaw is the map release date, which I won't be able to put in until we actually take possession of the maps. But this will be ready for the 2024 annual town meeting. Secondly, work with the planning board to prepare a new multifamily zoning overlay district that will comply with the state's zoning requirement for MBTA-adjacent communities. As you know, the state has passed a new law requiring that towns that are considered MBTA communities or MBTA-adjacent communities adopt some manner of multifamily zoning that is allowed by right in order to remain eligible for state infrastructure grants. So I've been working with the Regional Planning Commission on this. I do have a draft of a bylaw put together. And we're about to send it in to the state along with two suggested properties for the state to choose from. We've got to come up with about 30 acres of land, enough to accommodate 156 multifamily housing units to a density of 15 units per acre. So that pretty much limits it to those parcels in town that have access to municipal water and sewer. As you know, we have a sewer line that is coming in from Lemonster down Route 12, and that is serving the Northgate apartment buildings. So we're looking at that area and then another area. And we hope to have the state's approval on our locations and our bylaw sometime this fall so that I can bring the bylaw to the town meeting next year. Work with the planning board on three zoning amendments for the May 2023 town meeting. The planning board was going to take a crack at revising the zoning for kennels, but they decided not to pursue that one. They did make some minor adjustments to the zoning bylaws accessory dwelling unit provision. And they did repeal the temporary moratorium on adult-use marijuana establishments. Both of those zoning amendments passed at the 2023 town meeting. Okay, the big one. Revise the standards for the performance zone and update the zoning bylaws table of uses for commercial and industrial uses. This is going to be a significant undertaking. And I've applied to the One Stop for Growth Program with the state for $40,000 to hire a zoning expert to help us with this. And we should be finding out in the fall whether we got that money or not. If not, we're going to do it ourselves. Your Performance District bylaw and the 15-page of regulations that go with it do not make a lot of sense. They're hard to understand. And if the people at Town Hall don't understand them, then how can we advise landowners how to develop that area? So we want to take a crack at streamlining the Performance District. We want to revise your table of uses as it relates to commercial and industrial uses. You've got too many that you allow by special permit. You're allowing residential development in your commercial districts, and it's eating up all of your commercial itself land. And it doesn't make sense to have a set of detailed site standards, site planning standards, for just the Performance District. You should have a set of site plan standards for all of your commercial and industrial uses that require site plan review with the planning board. You do have a site plan provision in your zoning. Most towns that have such a provision in their zoning also have a set of detailed site planning standards that the planning board uses when evaluating site plans, covering things like landscaping and lighting and parking and egress and access. Where's your dumpster and the whole thing? So we want to tackle that as part of this project. Moving on, working with the Economic Development Committee to prepare a promotional map/brochure that will advertise Sterling's special places to both newcomer residents and to visitors alike. That effort is complete. And if you go online and go to All About Sterling, the link on your front page that says All About Sterling, and you click on that, you're going to see a link to a resource map and a resource list. And if you call up the resource list, all of the entry websites and Facebook pages are clickable. We're printing 3,000 of the paper versions of the brochure. Those are at the printer right now. I'll be picking them up anytime now. And that should last us a good three or four years. I'll be distributing them throughout the region once in the spring and once in the fall. We'll leave some at the library, some at the senior center, a bunch here at Town Hall, some at Chalkset Inn, some at the Appleseed Visitor Center.
How about the Millers?
Yes, oh absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be a great resource for families working with them to buy houses to come to town.
Thank you for working on that, Stephen. It has been something that we've talked about and did a little bit with, but not completely. So high five. Thank you.
Glad to help. Work with the Open Space Committee to plan for new trail links within Sterling and add links to neighboring communities. Well, you may or may not know, but Watchusic Greenways is currently working to forge a connection between the southern end of our portion of the rail trail to the northern end of the West Boylston portion of their rail trail. So they're working on that. And I am getting feasibility study price quotes from engineering firms to take a look at what it would take for us to take the northern end of our rail trail and get it past crazy corners and over to Route 12, where Watchusic Greenways holds some trail easements. I've gotten a couple of the price quotes right so far. I'm waiting on one more. But the idea is I will apply for a mass trails grant in the fall when that grant round opens up.
When that happens, Stephen, are you going to ride your bike to work from Lemonster to Sterling?
No, I am not.
Just ask it.
Next up is work with town administrator to prepare a database of earth removal permits and projects in town. That effort is complete. Review town-owned properties to see if any of them might be suitable for senior housing. I just started that effort today. And I'm looking at both your tax title properties and the properties that are tax delinquent, sizing them up to see if any of them would be suitable for senior housing should we ever take any of them through the tax title process. So I'll have more to say on that later on. Probably finish that over the summer. Work with the Conservation Agent to host an interdepartmental meeting to review the town's new stormwater management permitting system. We actually had that meeting earlier this week. It was more of getting the departments together to make sure we coordinate anything that's filed with Conservation goes to us and anything filed with planning goes to Conservation. When the planning board gets a large-scale development project, be it a subdivision plan or a site plan, we send it all to, we send them to all the department heads for review and comment. And Conservation will size up those plans to see if they're in need of a stormwater management permit. So I'm confident that we've worked out the necessary arrangements so that nothing falls through the cracks. Then the ongoing stuff. Mandate a planning board's caseload on a day-to-day basis. Continue to participate on MRPC's Brownfield Steering Committee and Economic Development Planning Committee. Continue to search out grant opportunities and advocate for the interest of the town at the state and regional meetings that I go to. That's my modul list, folks. That's where I'm at.
Stephen, is there any grants out there for for senior housing? Or do you know yet?
Well, yes, there are. The state has a number of affordable housing funding programs. But they're very competitive. And they often take years before they get to yours. And I'll use Westminster as an example. We had a piece of town-owned land behind the senior center that we had always slated for affordable senior housing. We picked a developer. They came up with a design. And they submitted it to the state for funding. They finally got final state approval for the funding this year. So it took us three years, a good solid three years, to secure the funding. So a project like this is going to take time and keeping at it. And it's not going to be easy.
Stephen, when they went for the funding, if they went for the funding three years ago, how did that affect the, now that they have, I mean, it's going to cost more now to do anything?
They had to reapply every year. And every year, they had to readjust their building costs.
Right.
As you know, they shot up considerably during the pandemic. So the town actually had to kick in some of its American Recovery Act to help make up for the shortfall. We've already obligated our American Recovery Fund, so we're not going to have that luxury. So we're going to need to choose a developer who has vast experience with senior housing and hope that they come up with a workable project proposal.
Right, sounds good. You know, that's number one on a lot of people's list is the senior housing.
Yeah.
Or affordable housing in general.
Yeah.
Affordable these days is not necessarily affordable.
I hear it from seniors all the time that the spouse has passed on, the kids are out of the house, and they're left rambling around a big old house that they can hardly afford the taxes on. They would love to downsize into something smaller in town, but there's nothing to worry about at the moment. And that's a shame. We're not unique in having that problem, but I certainly am working to address it.
Any questions, David?
No questions. Thank you very much. Very comprehensive report.
Okay. My door is always open should you want to come in and talk all things planning.
Houston might have a question.
Oh.
I'll go along with that, actually. I've told you before that you're awesome. I've had the opportunity to work with Stephen.
Tell him that.
And a lot of people in town that I talk to are still praising you. Your town planner part of the website is updated with all these site plans and everything. You've got so much work going on. And I just want to say how thankful we are to have you. And it's just great, everything the planning board is doing under you right now.
Well, you can't do this.
Yeah. The other thing behind that is not just the planning board. He spends a lot of time with the Economic Development Committee.
Exactly, yes.
A lot.
A lot.
Like he said, the door is always open. He answers questions. He's having seat everyone. It's great.
I know. He doesn't walk in crosswalks, all those things. It's great.
Have a good night, folks.
All right, next on our agenda is to appoint Brian Kendorf, speaking of the EDC, to the Economic Development Committee. Brian had actually been on the committee in the past. And just now, and he had to get off because of other obligations. But now he's got time to actually jump back into it. And he lives right here in the center of town. So any questions? Brian's not here, obviously. Mr. Mackey, would you like to speak to the appointment about Brian?
We're very happy to have him back. He's a very capable person. There's a certain element of wisdom that comes from him in terms of his business experience. And so he's an important contributor to our committee.
Anybody have any questions about Brian?
No questions.
I would entertain a motion to appoint Brian to the Economic Development Committee.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Me and I.
France and I. And no, Joe, you can't have him. Despite the fact that he's a financial guy. All right, so next on the list is transfers from different accounts to other accounts, et cetera, and so on. And Joe, you're going to have to sign off on this at the end. I can only imagine that he's already seen it.
Not sure. You usually send it after it's like waterproof, isn't it?
Well, he can at least look at it.
Sure. Never mind.
One way to do it.
So pretty much happens every year. Does anybody have any questions on any of these?
Do we know what the WRSD was to, I assume that's Building Inspector? Is that something to do with the school?
The school district line item to the Building Inspector wages. Obviously, we get all their inspection fees in. We just paid it all out of one account instead of the other one. So just combined it all for one.
I would make a motion to approve the end-of-year transfers from 2023.
I would second that motion.
We're all looking at you, Joe.
All waiting for you to pipe up, Joe. But we don't really.
All covered by our 2023 omnibus. No issue.
We don't really need you to say anything except if you had any questions about it and you just asked one. So because this is going to, after we approve or disapprove it, it'll go to Finance anyway.
And none of this is impactful from the Reserve Fund, I see. The second page is the Reserve Fund. Oh, that's Reserve Fund.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor?
You and I.
Smith and I.
Now I have a letter from SLCT to actually just back them up on some bills that are actually out there right now as far as getting them more money, basically, isn't it, Richard?
I didn't send these over looking for support way back. There was the cable bill, which obviously set their funding. And this would change their funding as they are decreasing due to streaming services and people cutting the cord from cable where the majority of their funding comes from. So these would update the current funding sources. Sound about right?
Pretty simple. Certainly, I would. David, any questions?
No questions.
Houston? Richard, you want to add to that or not?
Well, there really isn't much to add to. Just a piece of history. The cable bill went in somewhere in the 1970s, I think. And it hasn't been amended to kind of keep up with the changes in the technology, streaming in particular. And so when we look at what's happened across the state, this is not just unique to Sterling, but it's statewide. We see people moving to other kinds of technology away from the cable company. I understand that. The unfortunate part of that is that our funding has always been tied to a portion of the receipts from the cable company. So as people cut the cord and move to other alternatives, it means that our resources have diminished. And this is again, something that's statewide. And so Mass Access, which is sort of the collaborator that we all belong to, has been trying for the last two or three years to interest the legislature in finding an alternative way to support some part of the community access stations in the Commonwealth. And so all of these access stations have asked their local governing bodies for support so that we can continue to maintain the governmental programming in both Sterling and in Lancaster. So that's basically where we're coming from and why we're asking for it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, well, then I would entertain a motion to support SLCT in their endeavors to modernize the funding for community media programming. All those in favor?
You and I.
Smith and I.
France and I. So you could sign off on that before we leave today. And then we have approval of election workers. This is kind of a standard thing. I don't think it's necessary that we go through every name. It's been submitted by Tom Clark, Kathy Farrell. A lot of these people have been doing, volunteering for this particular station for years. And you might question, the third one from the bottom might be questionable. I'm not quite sure she's, I'm quite sure she's a registered voter.
I think it states right there that I am.
Yeah, well, that could be a typo.
It could be.
Anyway.
All great people. I've had the pleasure of working with you for at least three years now. So I would make a motion that we approve the election workers as written.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
You and I.
Smith and I.
France and I. Okay, and that's it for that. And Bill, would you like to give us an update on what you've got up to?
Sure.
You don't need your golf scores. Just, you know, town-related, that's it.
Going in the wrong direction. As we close out the fiscal year, I've been working on some of the grant closeouts, so the ADA grant. Obviously, we did the work at the beach, so that is closed out, obviously. Now that we've finished that, working on getting the reimbursement. Should be coming in August at some point. I did speak to the ADA coordinator, Matt Morrow. We may look at doing an ADA plan update from 2014 or '15. So it's just about aging out. So we may look to.
so we may look to go after the grant this year for the plan. There are a couple of earmarks potentially in the House and Senate for the town. Obviously, the state budget is still in conference committee, sitting there, so nothing is passed at this point. Downtown grant, we're in the same position. We've done our progress report and the reimbursements for the fiscal year. Obviously, we still plan to get our final design plans done by the end of the calendar year, so we have an idea of where we're going and be able to apply for some grants perhaps in the spring as we look to potentially start work downtown. Finishing up the school flooring, we did the first half last summer. We're doing the Potent Side this year. We're working with the school district on the school security funding that was passed at town meeting. We did not get the grant that the district had applied for, so it may change our plans a little bit. We had three more windows to replace in the basement from the original plan. We are getting those done. And then we'll look at the funding that we got at this town meeting to start probably on this side of the building now that we're in the new fiscal year. Obviously, the roof was done, the masonry work was done, the windows were a little dirty, so we are contracting to get those cleaned up as part of that project as well. So, that should clean things up. Nothing new on the library, lift and elevator. We are trying to get the lift replaced as the second half of what we do with the ARPA funding. Peg's Pond, the benches and picnic tables, those are ordered. Obviously, with the storms, we've had a few washouts, but DPW's been working to get that cleaned up. We're also working on getting some of the algae out of there now that we can run the pumps again. We are working on the 1835 building septic plans and the easements. We have a letter to go out shortly. We'll also need the bid documents when we get those easements acquired. The last couple of projects in the building for the 1835 would be the suspended ceiling downstairs and the window treatments on the first floor. Those are pretty close to getting rolling. We should be going out to bid fairly soon this summer for the Maple Street sidewalks. That was a complete street grant program. Funding for that, we had to pay for the design. The reflective beacons for the crossings, both downtown by the school that we purchased and for Maple and Bird Street, we should be getting those the middle of next month. So, I believe those are the biggest items, and then we can, once we get Maple Street out to bid, we can focus our efforts completely on the downtown design plans. Those are the things on there. Downtown signage, obviously, we did the line painting. The signs are in, so next week, those should be going up. Stop signs, new handicap signs, additional parking past Emma's and some no parking signs for some of the Gore areas. David and I attended the Mass Highway Driver Safety, I don't know what the official title is, Driver Skills Safety.
Truck rodeo competition.
Yes. Ultimately, about driver skills and safety, but that was up at Mount Wachusett today. Oh, the mountain, not the college. Obviously, the position for COA Director is posted. Joe King has been the designee from the Finance Committee. We have Kevin Bopray from the COA Board, Pam from Foss. We have two resident volunteers, and we need a select board volunteer. So, I don't know if you would like to pick?
So, we got Joe, Pam, Kevin, and two residents.
So, we'd have to, we'd have to pick one and then a select board member.
When are we starting this?
So, the position's posted to the beginning of August. So, at that point, then we'll turn it over to them to review the applicants and bring forward three finalists to the select board.
You don't mind doing it? Been there, done that?
It would only make sense if somebody had had senior experience.
I knew it, I knew it, I knew it. You'll be sorry. Someday, you'll be here. Yes. I can, but we're on tour. Wait. Okay, no, I'd be more than happy to do that in, yeah, okay. And then Veronica's done October?
End of October. So, we're hoping the timeline would allow for some overlap between her and the new director.
Yeah. Did you say it's posted? Have we gotten any applicants at all?
We have four.
Excellent.
Two active, active directors, and then two in the general realm.
Two sleepers? It's like, great. That's what you need, a sleeper. Now, well, and whoever comes in, I mean Veronica, you know, she's done a really good job. Her and Claire Felden and all of the volunteers over there have done a fine job bringing that around. I mean, we remember the days when it was downstairs and dark and gloomy and all of that, so we get the new building, which was great, and then, you know, we went for a couple of months without a director. Well, we had an interim director, but it was mostly volunteers. And so, how it's come this far in basically six years. We started building it seven years ago, so six years. They said it couldn't be done, Joe. We did it.
Just gotta have faith.
Gotta have faith. And money, yeah. We did, really, the only reason we got the funding is because they were sick of me getting up at town meeting floor and saying, you know, we need money for this. Bob Culler is the one that put us over the top. When he got up and said, "It's about time we do this for our seniors," I'll never forget that town meeting. It was great, you know, because we went four times, I think, to the town meeting floor.
It's quite an asset for the town.
It's been phenomenal, really. It's really been, and people from other towns go there, and they love the amount of activity that they have going on. There's always something going on. And then you got Ruby in the kitchen putting out lunch every day, you know, so it's really, yeah, a lot of positivity. And from other towns who have bigger senior centers. We won't go there, will we, Richard? Okay, so that's good news, that we already have four applicants.
So, we will have a meeting before it closes, so if I don't receive any more resident ones, we can pick it both. That's gonna be the seventh or the third in August.
Not that far away.
Yeah, a few more weeks. So, the fifth would be our first, first meeting in August, so it closes the end of that week. So, we can pick our residents if we have two or more, whatever.
I vote Claire Felden. I don't think she'd be interested in being on this search. She works very closely with the director. That's the only reason I ask.
She has not volunteered.
I don't blame her for not volunteering, but, okay.
Another volunteer has vol, you know, volunteered over there, but she did not.
Okay. All right. David, anything?
I have nothing to add.
Any questions for you, Bill?
No questions.
All right. Kirsten, nothing?
Nothing.
Wow. All on vacation. Kama? I was just kidding. I really didn't expect this.
You know, I guess we have three meetings scheduled. Did you want to hold all three of those, or did you, I know occasionally, when you have a summer month where you have three, you sometimes have chosen to not have one of those meetings. I'm just checking.
Well, I think part of what we should think about or talk about is, does anybody have a vacation planned during the month of August?
I do.
Okay, and hopefully, they coincide with this one, and then that would be the meeting we would have. So, when's yours?
It would be our next meeting, so it's early August.
Early August. And yours?
If there's nothing.
Let me go. That's from the sixth to the 12th.
So, where does that put us? I'm sorry, Bill, and how about you?
Oh, I don't, I didn't.
Did I? Yeah, sure. Kama, you have anything? All right, so you're going the sixth through the 12th, and you're going the first through the fifth?
Yep.
So, and our meetings would be the 16th and the 30th?
The fifth would be the first meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, the fifth.
No, where am I? I'm in the wrong month.
Yeah, the fifth would be-
August of July. That was the problem. Who do you?
Tell you what, you guys figure it out, let me know, and yes, we can skip a meeting.
So, it would be the next, the upcoming meeting, the one in two weeks, would be the one that I would be missing. But if there are things that need to be on the agenda, we need to go by my schedule.
So, that would be, the ninth would be our next meeting. Is that right?
Second would be our next meeting.
Second.
The second would be our next meeting? Okay, so, and you're gone, and then you're gone the next week, which doesn't really interfere with a meeting date anyway. So, we'll do the 16th and the 30th?
And then he's gone the 30th.
Unless you want to come to California with me?
You go, it's hot.
San Diego.
I love San Diego.
You just said no, so you missed it.
Changed my mind. I'll be gone the 30th also.
All right, one meeting in August it is. Sounds good.
Yeah, well, we'll definitely have that one in the middle. And then if anything happens, or we don't have anything pressing, we could definitely look at the 30th.
So, we'll cancel, we'll cancel the second?
The second, yeah. The other thing is Sterling Fair is always looking for volunteers, still looking for volunteers. You can go on their site, on the website, and sign in for just about anything they have going on. And then August 10th, the senior center will be a, their antique car show, 5:30 to 7:30, so mark your calendars for that. One thing I did forget, Bill, at some point in the next, whether it be the next meeting or not, can we get an update on where we are with town council as far as, you know, how much we spent with them so far last year?
Yep.
Thank you. Gloria, do you need? Do you need something specific?
I want to make a comment.
Okay, if you want to get to the podium and introduce yourself, we've actually finished our meeting, but I'll take one more comment.
My name's Paul Farmer. I live on Elliott Road here in Sterling.
Right.
So, I want to tell a couple of quick stories about downtown.
Okay. Mr., it doesn't have anything to do with our agenda? This is so-
No, but it's, it is if we do some changes in the town. We're gonna be doing some underground work and some other things, and we're looking at the center.
Yep.
So, what I wanted to just mention was, a few months back, I turned the corner by the light department, and I was heading into town, and a double-length dump truck was coming this way, and when he made the turn to face me near the light department, he was going so fast, he went five feet over the center line. Causing me to pull over and allow this jerk to go by. On a Monday morning, I believe it was a Monday morning, the-
We understand that the speeding to the center of town-
Speeding is a problem.
Is a problem.
It was a real quick one, though. There was a supply truck right here for Emma's.
Yes.
And I came down this road right here, and I stopped to go, you know, and then it was 7:30 in the morning. Supply truck was facing towards Leventhal on the road.
Right.
He was getting in his van, he pulled and did a complete Uwe. The Uwe was done right here. And then he went that way. He could have gone up this way. So, obviously, we have some situations here in town, downtown.
Which haven't, really haven't changed over the last 40 years, trust me. But the speeding thing is that the police are on that. They have it, you know, and they're taking the data, and they've had given reports in the past. As far as somebody pulling a Uwe, that's just stupid. You know, and unfortunately, we don't have a fix for stupid. We can't. But, I mean, if there's, they're trying to have a police presence down here, but it can't be 24/7, so, I mean, uh-
I know. I was, I would hope that the stretch, probably a half-mile covering the center of town, could have some better signage for trucks slowing down.
All right, I'll queue up my, yeah.
That's my ultimate goal, you know?
Yeah, for trucks. Yeah, I don't know what we can do legally because Route 12 is Route 12. And despite the fact that Sterling owns from, is responsible for, from SMLD down to the Clinton Savings Bank, the state was gracious enough to let us take care of that. Yes, I'm being facetious, but the only thing we can do is ask the chief, Godet, to have more of a presence, maybe more of a presence earlier in the morning. I'm not sure when they're here. I know they're spending a lot of time on the weekends just because of that. You know, a lot of pedestrians, because it's Sterling Street Market, and, you know, and still, even though it's the weekend, you still have those trucks particularly. I was downtown when I was talking to one of the DPW guys, and just standing there for 10 minutes with him, and four huge trucks went by. You know, you can't stop them from going through the center of town. I understand why they're doing it, because they want to avoid some of the other highways where there might be more state police presence. So, instead of, you know, coming off and, or staying on the road and getting off down on Chalk City, they cut off and they come through the center of town. Or maybe they're coming for something to eat, who knows?
The last one I'll mention is last week, I was driving in town, and I had to pull over, everybody had to pull over. A flatbed truck was going through the center of town for one of our construction companies, going in that direction, and he had a big front-end loader that, that was wider than the flat that he had. So, everybody cleared the way for that guy. Why is he going through the center of town instead of going up to the next exit to get off and do his business at the, at the garage that's owned by the construction company? Those are just some of the things I'm just mentioning. You're gonna try and make it more pedestrian-friendly downtown. We have a library, we have restaurants, and so on. If we don't face these things head-on, it's just gonna continue and continue until somebody gets hurt, then there's gonna be, this room is gonna be filled with, you know, citizens of Sterling.
Yeah. The only thing we can do is talk to the chief and see if there is anything we can do about trucks coming through the center, but I believe that the subject has already come up, and legally, we can't do it, so.
I just wanted to say my piece, hi Joe. Anyway.
That's it? Hi Joe, that's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, I don't, I don't know what the fix is. Just don't know.
Worth calling a company, too, if you get a company name on the truck, you know, because they're responsible, the owners of the company are responsible if their drivers cause harm to anybody. So, I've, I've called some companies a couple of times, so. It may, may help, may not, something to do.
But honestly, I called somebody that had a, there were 14 trucks in 15 minutes going on Albright Road, and if you're familiar with the road, it's not built for that many trucks. I know exactly where they were going, exactly where they're coming from. Sat down, wrote a letter to the company, and they stopped. And I didn't even say, this is Marion Krantz, and Chair of the Sterling Select Board, didn't even say that. It's just, somebody that lives on this road where there's walkers, with, you know, kids and dogs and all that, and school bus kids waiting. So, they stopped, so maybe Kirsten's right. You just, you know what the company is, maybe suggest to them they don't bring that front-end loader through the center of town when it takes up the whole road. Kama?
I'd just like to put my goody-two-shoes on there in here and say that I have actually called to tell a company that their truck driver was awesome as he drove through town. That also helps.
That does.
If you see somebody who is stopping at the, you know, pulling over people, behaving appropriately, if you call the company and let them know that this is the license plate of this person who is an awesome driver, it actually helps as well.
It does.
Hey, you seeing in the front of the center of town, though, is just like, what? Maybe we need to put a rotary there. No?
Be-bums, sorry.
Be-bums. Okay, any, Mr. King, anything further from you?
Nothing further.
Are you sure?
I am sure.
Okay. Mr. Mackey?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I've been gratefully involved in working at the beach, and in particular, the bathhouse facility. And so, I want to recognize the town administrator, Matt Morrow, and Sherry for the work that they've done getting the ADA grant, and then completing all of the work that has made that building improvement, rather market, and it's gonna help out the people who are handicapped and now have a place that they can get into and fully functional. So, thank them very much.
Whether it's certain they did not cooperate.
Nope.
So, thank you to Bill and Matt and Sherry. Love, Mr. Mackey.
Thank you.
That's all, okay. Alright, I entertain a motion. All those in favor?
You and I.
Thank you, thank you.